First, we will begin with public comment. And then we will have superintendent chair and student remarks, including elementary literacy update and also November school committee meetings and also some fall town meeting information. We will then move to the consent agenda with consideration of approval of the Winchester High School varsity softball team out of state trip, March 21st, 23rd, 2025. Consideration of disposal of surplus technology and consideration of approval of minutes for June 25th and July 18th, 2024. We'll have report update and action items, including consideration of approval of policies DJ, DJA, DJE, which relate to purchasing and JJEF, which relates to student activities accounts. Then consideration of dispersal of $35,138.57 from student activity accounts to the class of 2020 officers. An update on facility projects and phase one of the facilities master planning. Then we'll go into anticipated future agenda items, future meeting dates and an executive session followed by adjournment. So with that, let me just pull up my Zoom screen. We will move to public comment. See, where did my Zoom screen go? Let's see. Okay, so I'll just read, I see that we have a number of people in the audience and I will just read the information on public comment. Public comment shall be for a period of 20 minutes. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee shall identify themselves by name and address and should speak for no more than three minutes. All remarks will be addressed through the chair of the meeting. And public comment is not a discussion, a debate or a dialogue between citizens and the committee. It's a citizen's opportunity to express their opinion on issues of school committee business. And if you have written comments that are longer than three minutes, you can present them to the committee before or after the meeting. Just simply by emailing us at schoolcommittee@winchesterps.org, which is at the bottom of the screen. So with that. Let me see, seeing as how a few of us are on the road. Ms. Bergstrom, could you keep time if we do indeed have some people who would like to?
I would be happy to do that for you.
Thank you. And with that, if any of our attendees are interested in making a comment this evening, could you please raise your digital hand?
One hand for now, Erica Walsh.
I see one hand, so we'll elevate Ms. Walsh. I feel as if I've seen you at a number of meetings, Walsh. Today, that means, today, I mean.
Hi, thank you for having me. Erica Walsh, 64 Wedgmere Avenue. And I'm here today, just, I got the honor to be at the Vova meeting this morning where Dr. Hackett was in attendance and we had a really nice lively discussion about phones in schools. And I wanted to take this opportunity to let you all know, like, just kind of request a a task force or a workforce with the school committee and see if there's a way to get parents who are interested in moving forward with a phone-free school atmosphere in the high schools. And this is something that we would like to have on the radar at the school committee and have discussions with the faculty, with parents, students, and have discussion and have this be a topic that we talk about in Winchester. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And easily within time, Ms. Walsh.
That was. We appreciate that, too. So, thank you, Ms. Walsh. We're going to put you back into the audience. That's all. So, and we're also on Wind Cam, so if it's easier to watch on Wind Cam, so.
Okay, thanks.
So, let's see. Next, we have Seamus. I believe Seamus Brady.
Promoting. Can you do a little help on? Ms. Walsh, if you would, please. It's been a while since I've demoted anybody. I don't want to take it personally either.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
We can. It would be great if you could turn on your camera.
I'm driving. I don't know.
You're driving. Never mind.
So, Seamus Brady, 15 Clementus Street. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak. I just had a brief note. I sent this to Doctors Matthews and Hackett, but in Medford, they just opened a really great fully accessible playground at one of their elementary schools. And I think it's a really great model for, you know, what might be able to be accomplished at Lynch and other playgrounds in the future. So I would just encourage members to check it out. And again, Dr. Hackett and Dr. Matthews have the information on that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, since I have that, I will make sure that it makes it into the minutes for the meetings so that members have that as well, the link that was sent over.
Okay. Thank you. Alrighty, do we have anybody else for public comment this evening? I'm just scrolling up and down my list.
Do you not see any other hands raised? Ms. Boney's.
Oh.
Up, there's one, just went up. Tina Cole.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, if you could turn on your camera, if you can, that would be great.
Yeah, I can't figure that out for some reason.
No.
Hold on, I'm, I'm on my phone.
Thanks for trying.
That's right. It's always a challenge, all the different things.
Now we lost Ms. Cole.
Nope, she's there.
Oh, no, there she is.
She's, Ms. Cole, you need to unmute.
I promise I'm not that this technology illiterate. My name is Tina Cole. I live on 14 Ursel Drive and I just wanted to piggyback on what Erica Walsh said, which is, I would like to encourage the school committee to start a task force about reviewing the use of cell phones in schools. And we currently have a parental working group that's not officially part of any school committee, but we do have interested parents in the community who would like to partner with our educators on just reviewing the use of cell phones in schools and all the way from the elementary to high school level. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm scanning again.
Me, too.
There is one.
Stephanie Gordon. We will elevate you now.
Hi, can you see me?
I can.
Bad internet connection, and that's why I was kind of hesitant to raise my hand. So if I suddenly get this.
No, you're great.
I can email my notes. But really quickly, so Tina and I have the great honor of being co-chairs of PIS this coming year. Our first meeting is next week. And in addition to devices, just as Erica and Tina have brought up, that's a hot topic that are on parents' minds these days. But in addition to that, is, well, playground safety, as Seamus discussed as well. These are some of the topics that we hope to be addressing this year. And also literacy, obviously. I know that's on your radar. But specifically, the conversations now in the parent community are with the MCAS scores out is that literacy isn't just phonics or spelling, but it's also comprehension. It's, you know, this giant complex concept that I know you guys are currently addressing and it's on everyone's radar. But specifically, the curriculum for grades three, four and five. I know there's a lot of great focus on K-2, but we'd love to hear more about what's going on in grades three, four and five as well. Thank you so much. Stephanie Gordon, 64 Bacon Street. I don't think I said that.
Thank you. We appreciate it. All right. We'll give a few more, another minute or so again, just in case any hands rise.
We can take one more and then that would be the last.
Thank you for that. Yes, I was wondering that as well.
Not see any more hands.
Nope, I think.
I do not see any more hands. All right.
On, but thank you for everyone who's joined us, too.
Yes, thank you. We appreciate the comments. And then with that, I will close public comment.
And my work there is done.
But there's more, always. So, Dr. Hackett, I guess I will turn it over to you for an elementary literacy update.
So, we're doing?
And any other remarks?
Okay, all right, all right. Oh, yes, okay, sorry. Just trying to keep up here. Well, good evening, everybody, and I appreciate the comments this evening. And as was mentioned, I was, had a chance to visit with the EO parents this morning. I have been at actually all of the parent associations so far, with the exception of Lynch, which I will be attending in early November. And it's always great to see people and it's great to hear the questions. And it was a spirited conversation, which I appreciate and always enjoy. So I, again, I appreciate the comments and the questions around literacy regarding kind of the upper grades. I'm not intending to give an update on that tonight, but I only just to say, and really, the elementary literacy update is no more than to say that the elementary literacy team is together. I've put out information on their first meeting. We've had a couple of meetings internally with the collaborative. We've established, not yet to be released, but we have established a a meeting schedule that will take us out through, through a good part of the rest of the year. That will be part of a conversation at the next ELT meeting. And those dates will be, will continue to provide those updates on an ongoing basis. The, the group itself is, obviously, there's a lot to be discussed, a lot to be done. So I think the kind of the next meeting will be in around some of the prioritization of, of the work. And just only to say that we've got a great group of people at the table. We also are very much aware and want to make sure that, that all of our staff at the elementary level have the opportunity to hear this information from their respective representatives on the ELT that we're gathering. Not only are we always just bringing the ELT together, we're also making sure that that information is shared with their colleagues and that they have, colleagues have a chance to give additional input and feedback, which then would come back to the full ELT. The group itself will be meeting approximately monthly, maybe a little bit more. And so I'm excited about the work that lies ahead for them. I think they've got off to a great start and had really good dynamics and a good atmosphere and a lot of energy around it at their first meeting. So good things to come and we'll keep everybody posted on that. I do want, did want to share that we, as the committee knows, we do have meetings scheduled for town meeting dates in November. And I don't know whether I want to be the one to cover this or whether the chair would like to cover this, but that was a discussion we just wanted to have this evening. Town meeting starts in November. I believe the first town meeting date is November 7th.
November 7th.
Which is a Thursday. We've moved our meetings, as you know, to Thursdays. So the meeting dates for town meeting right now are the 7th, Tuesday, the 7th, and then.
The 14th and the 21st. And then we've also added in one more meeting, a regular meeting for the, for which we're holding the 19th, which is a Tuesday for a regular meeting.
Town meeting also has scheduled Monday, the 18th as well. So hopefully we're not far out. So that, really, the only change would be that we're, we would be looking to have a regular meeting of the school committee on November 19th, if we can, if that's possible, because as you know, the pre-town meeting meetings are quite short. So that's really it for me.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for the update on the elementary literacy team. That's really great to hear that the, our teachers and principals and specialists are working together to formulate their thoughts. And that they've got a process that they've got laid out over the next many months of the school year. I, school commit, so for, from the school committee perspective, we have also been trying to attend as many of the parent association meetings as possible. I've been to quite a few so far. And then it's very, it's just very valuable for school committee, I think, to be able to be seen at the, at the meetings. And then also just to hear the kinds of questions that are coming up in the community and the things that parents and families and guardians are are interested in asking questions about or worried about, et cetera. So we really value that time with the parent associations and appreciate that. And I will be getting a list of the, all the parent association meetings, as much as I can, from our administrator or maybe also from Ms. Gordon and Ms. Cole, who are joined, who joined us for public comment, so that school committee members can be aware of all of the dates and be able to, and hopefully be able to check in and attend those. We also have town meeting approaching, as Dr. Hackett was saying, and a few issues that are issues or articles that the school committee will be keenly interested in, which we will talk about more later today. Ms. Bergstrom, I see that your hand is up. Nope, wait. Hold on, let me expand my screen so I can see this.
Just another community note, Ms. Boney's.
Yes.
That the November election is fast approaching. And one of the issues for the town on that election will be the Community Preservation Act. And they are also holding two events, public information events on the October 16th at 2:30 at the Jenks Center and then 6:30 one that will be broadcast on Wind Cam for the public to learn more about that ballot initiative that will be on our ballot on November 5. Or on people's paper ballots already.
That's right.
And I know that we, we don't typically respond to public comment questions, but I just wanted to take a quick minute to thank Mr. Brady for his comments on accessible playgrounds and to reassure both him and the public that over the last year, Mr. Marin and Dr. Hackett and the school committee have been working pretty extensively with Winnipeg. We are just as excited about having a fully accessible playground, as accessible as we can for the space that we have for the Lynch Playground. So we hope that the community is as excited about our Lynch Playground being accessible when it opens as Mr. Brady is about Medford. So I look forward to seeing that and our unveiling when it happens.
It's really coming up quickly. The fall of 2025 is not far away. Thank you. Any other information from committee members? Otherwise, we will move on to our consent agenda, which I had read off earlier, but consists of considering the softball teams out of state trip, also disposal of surplus technology. And then with respect to the minutes for June 25th and July 18th, these should now be in your, in your binders. But because I, I think the July 18th minutes had come in probably just before this meeting. We're going to table the July 18th minutes and then for the June 25th minutes, I think also as well, they would need to be tabled so that you have, so that committee members have a chance to read through them.
Would you like a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Or do you see any?
As presented, but removing.
Removing the July 18th minutes and reminding the community that if anybody is really looking for those, you can watch that meeting on Wind Cam until we have them published.
Yes. And if people would, if members would be more comfortable reading through the June 25th minutes, we can also pull those out as well.
Can I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, with the exception of the meeting minutes?
Second.
Thank you very much. All in favor? And this will have to be a roll call vote. Yes, thank you, Ms. Bergstrom. Mr. Hopcroft?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Dr. Matthews?
Aye.
Thank you. And the chair votes aye, so the vote is unanimous. Thank you very much. Let me just see. Okay, so now we will move on to report update and action items. Beginning with consideration of approval of policies DJ around purchasing and DJA around procurement and DJE, also around procurement and then JJEF with, which deals with student activities accounts. And these had come to school committee at the previous September 12th meeting, I believe it was. And Mr. Hopcroft had provided some comments and feedback on policy DJ. So we have incorporated his feedback on DJ, which was mostly just minor change to some of the wording with regard to Winchester. So if anybody has any further comment on those policies, otherwise I would accept a motion to approve those.
I would be happy, I, with somebody talking.
I said I was happy to make a motion to approve those as presented unless anyone has any questions.
I mean, however we want to mark that, I'm happy to motion it or second it, but I heard somebody, I thought there's something, some talking in the background that seemed sort of muffled.
I have people who've come home now. There's a little hubbub in the back of the, in the back of the house.
Got it. So for whatever purpose, happy to motion or second, and then I think we have both.
Okay. So all in favors. Dr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Aye.
And Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and the vote is unanimous. So thank you very much. Moving on to consideration of dispersal of $35,000, $135,138.57 from the student activity accounts to the class of 2020 officers. And there is a brief memo from Mr. Marin in our binder about this. If you have questions, we can take those now. Otherwise, I would accept a motion to consider the dispersal.
I'm happy to make a motion to accept the disposal of surplus technology as presented.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And all in favor, Mr. Hopcroft?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Dr. Matthews?
Aye.
And Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and the vote is unanimous on the dispersal as well. Thank you. And next item is just an update on our facility projects and phase one of master facilities planning. Mr. Nixon had prepared a memo, which we had added to the binder, but it was in early. And then I believe there is an update to it. So many of you may not have gotten a chance to review this, but I think it was hot off the presses because capital planning committee had a meeting yesterday evening. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Nixon.
Ms. Boney's, I see Dr. Hackett saying before we do.
Oh, sorry, I closed the, so my Zoom screen.
It's okay.
Dr. Hackett.
And I will unmute. I just wanted to mention that Jason Capadano has a hand up. I'm assuming it might be related to something on the agenda and not public comment, but I'm not entirely sure. So I would just recommend that maybe we promote him to see what it might be.
Because he is the coach of the girls, of the high school girls softball team.
And I believe the proponent of the requesting requests.
Yes. So. Yes, Mr. Capadano. Welcome. We can't, you're still muted.
How about now?
There you are.
I can hear you now.
I don't, I don't know if you have, if you have camera capability, but if you do. Oh, thank you.
Not a problem at all. I appreciate it. I just didn't know, the reason I raised my hand, I didn't want to interrupt. It was just the order of the agenda and I saw that first, I was on the top of that agenda and then we were heading to the lower level. So I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't completely skipped. So.
No, it was in, it was a part of the consent agenda. And I actually had meant to say, good luck, good luck in Florida with this, with this trip. But I skipped, I wasn't looking at my notes. So.
I apologize for interrupting. I didn't know if I had to say something to that. So thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you. So now we'll go back to Mr. Nixon for the update on facility projects and the facilities master plan.
First of all, I want to thank Jason for being here tonight because it gave me the two minutes that I needed to get from my car to my computer since I was not quite ready when you first called on me. So thank you, Jason Capadano. So you all have a memo in your, in the folder for tonight's meeting. Much of this will be familiar to you. So just to give you a quick recap, and I'm not going to read all the memo in detail, but with respect to our upcoming fall town meeting, we have some article numbers that have been assigned. And we have order of sequence for a lot of this work. So for the school district access controls, this is what we call kind of the capital plannings omnibus article, capital stabilization fund. This is request, there are 15 requests under Article 12. So request number five is $270,000 from the CSF for our district access controls. And we've discussed this a couple of times, certainly in our ranking process and then in the update that I gave you after capital finished its ranking in August. Request number 10 under Article 12 is the supplemental funding for the Vincent Owen Play Surface. That supplements a previous appropriation from town meeting. Article, we also do have under Article 12, the security camera installation from McCall in the high school. I think we had discussed previously, these were two separate requests from us initially. However, they've been collapsed into one request. This is to accommodate in case the McCall, the McCall scope comes in high and the high school comes in low or vice versa, just makes the funds a little more fungible. Um, the McCall scope comes in high and the high school comes in low or vice versa, just makes the funds a little more fungible. So there actually are three items um, under Article twelve. And I think that's reflected in the updated memo that you got late this afternoon. Um, under Article fourteen, um, this is the McCall Middle School and Ambrose Roof Replacement and Repair Project. I just remind the committee and those watching tonight, we're not talking about re-roofing the entirety of McCall Middle School. McCall, as we know, is just a collection of buildings, um, some of them actually quite new. Uh, so this actually addresses the the shingled pitched roof of the original nineteen thirty two building. And some adjacent structures with flat membrane roofs that are in a really rough shape and overdue for replacement. It also covers uh, some masonry wall repair and counter flashings adjacent to these, to these roofs. And then at Ambrose, um, there's very, very limited um, new roof required. It's mostly a repair project that will extend the life of that roof, we hope another eight or nine years or more. Um, but this article uh, funds both, again, kind of similar to the security cameras I mentioned. So it's one lump sum of funding, gives us a little flexibility between the two projects. Um, that's one point nine three five million from the building stabilization fund and a little over a million dollars in borrowing. So that that will be bonded um, for the rest of that work. Uh, with respect to the Winchester High School Concrete Project, um, a little more to talk about here. So as you know, this is a joint article between the Capital Planning Committee um, and the EFPBC. So we had a meeting, um, I think it was last week, um, feels like it was three weeks ago, it was probably just last week. Um, SGH finished their more detailed analysis um, um, and development of scope for the high school. If you will remember, we asked them to go back out and look at the top side scope to be really clear about what needed to be in this project. That concrete that has deformed uh, underneath vinyl tile is really easy to see. Because think about the vinyl tile when DP, especially right now, DPW has worked so hard to clean and wax the floors for the start of school. So any imperfections in the floor, you see almost as if it was a mirror. That's certainly not the case where you have carpet. That's much harder to pick up. So the team went out, um, did another more detailed survey. They found um, a few additional areas um, uh, for top side repair. Um, but they felt like they just weren't quite ready to come up with that complete definition of scope and give us a number that they were confident. For funding for the fall. However, um, as we all know, a big part of this project, in fact, a larger element of the cost. Involves that surface applied corrosion inhibitor applied to the concrete from below in the crawl space. And in that regard, we have some good news. The construction cost for that work has actually come down from six thirty to about, uh, I think five hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. And there was strong interest on the part of both the EFPBC and Capital of moving forward on that, because we can. Uh, those documents, we can pull together fairly quickly. We are um, laying on top of that a very conservative ten percent contingency. We're including allowances for bid documents and construction administration. And then again, on the suggestion of um, leadership of the Capital Planning Committee, we're also rolling into this request. Um, funding for a bid set for all the top side repair, that would include additional testing and inspection. Updated cost estimates to get us up to, we would actually have a bid set or darn close to it prior to spring town meeting. So we're thinking sometime maybe in early February, uh, hopefully no later. We'll have a much greater confidence on the scope and the cost needed to do the top side work. So think of this now as addressing the concrete in two steps rather than one. However, the way this article in motion has been written under Article fifteen, if there are funds that are available. Uh, as we wrap up the surface applied corrosion inhibitor, those funds are actually again fungible. So they can actually go towards the top side work. So right now, the estimate of what we're asking for, forgive me, this means that we're asking for eight forty five in the fall. To address the concrete from below, but remember, that does include the design and engineering work to get us to a bid set by spring for the top side work. We're estimating the balance needed for the spring is around three fifty five. That number may change. But we won't know yet until we get through that more detailed design process. And in addition, we actually get the corrosion inhibitor work bought out and under contract. As I said, if you have money left over, it can actually be applied and offset the cost of the top side work. So hopefully that's clear. Uh, so we're moving forward, if you will, with this first phase of work in the fall. And and we're looking for town meeting to support that with an appropriation of eight hundred and forty five thousand dollars. And then I'm going to pivot to the other big high school project, uh, which is the gym reflooring and reconfiguration project. Um, that's a joint article between the EFPBC and the Select Board. Um, we've had this conversation previously, but just to summarize for anybody watching, um, we had. I think it was four bids uh, on the project over the summer, uh, that we had a low bidder that was within budget. But that bidder actually subsequently pulled their bid, um, and um, and chose not to engage with us on the project. That left us with the, with the second lowest bidder that was actually above budget. And we had two options. We could either just pull everything and rebid the job, or we could ask that second lowest bidder to hold their number through fall town meeting. Which they were under no obligation to do. Um, and that was really the recommended, recommendation of management was to take that latter route. Uh, so they've done so, so we know what number we need to hit to have a project. Um, the request for supplemental funding is six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Um, that's a lot of money. That includes not only the gap we think we need to make up with the contractor, but some very conservative um, contingencies. This is an appropriation from free cash. I would remind everybody, Springtown Meeting already put. A quarter of a million dollars of free cash towards the project on top of the um, overlay funds that were available. And the Select Board's ARPA appropriation. Um, and I I I'll defer to the superintendent a little bit on this one, because I don't, I don't want to sort of get too ahead of ourselves. I think we've talked previously that there are some groups that have expressed interest in making some private donations towards the project. Uh, we've received some more confirmation of that this week. Those donations are not included in this ask of six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So should those donations come forward, uh, we would be looking actually to amend the motion and actually reduce this number. And I'm, I'm hopeful that that'll be the case. I'm excited at that opportunity, in which case this becomes a bit of a public-private partnership. Um, any private donations towards this project only, you know, reduce the amount of free cash we're seeking. Um, and free cash, you know, has many, many people um, angling for it for many other important needs throughout the town. That go far beyond anything we try to do on the school side, so uh, we'll see where that goes. Um, and again, I'd ask the superintendent to weigh in if there's anything he wants to add to that before I move on to the master plan piece.
No, well said. Also, I think we're, we are encouraged that um, there's uh, private interest in in helping support the project. And um, as all of you know, this is not simply a replacement of a of a floor that is in need of replacement. This is truly a complete renovation and reconfiguration of the space to make it. A lot more usable for both our student athletes as well as the community. It's a, it's a, I think it'd be a great project. And I think it'll really expand our ability to um, to get more out of that, that space.
So then I think the last item here is just a footnote on the facilities master plan. Um, as you all know, we were, we were hoping to have an engagement with the UMass Donahue Institute. Um, and we can now actually confirm that that we have that in writing. We have a contract with them. This was reviewed with a spending authorization by the EFPBC last month. Think of this as phase one of the master plan. This is the, literally the very same team that worked with the district back in twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen. Uh, this is a specific group within UMass that looks at, let, let's call them sort of macroeconomic, macro housing. Uh, macro employment factors, that they are much more tuned in to what's happening in these, with, with, in these areas sort of statewide. Uh, or Commonwealth wide, as well as within Metro Boston and Middlesex County. Uh, this group is also um, engaged with the MSBA in an interesting uh, project where they're actually rethinking. Um, how they might project enrollment themselves, so it's great to have these folks on board with us. Um, right now, we're just at the beginning of frankly, just funneling them information. They, they have a pretty sort of a rigorous evaluative process. Um, no meetings have taken place. We're just literally in kind of fact finding and data gathering mode right now. Now, the team will start uh, kind of combing through all this and beginning their analytical process in November. And we hope to have a deliverable, deliverable from them sometime in mid-December. Uh, and we really needed to get this under contract before we could then let the other foot drop, which is um, the scope for the architectural master planning team. So that's what we're focused on right now, is confirming that scope um, and getting an architect on board. It's still early days for that, uh, but the goal is to have them on board, hopefully by November, so they can begin their facilities assessments. And then when it's time to start crunching numbers and look at the capacity of buildings and sites for things like a new Morocco. Uh, we will have some sense of enrollment projection from UMass by that point. So it's a little later than we had hoped, but it, we certainly seem to be within striking distance of the window for core replacement projects. Uh, which opens in January and typically closes in March um, with the MSBA. So that's really the update on that. I would just say maybe as a footnote, um, just as they did previously. UMass is very interested in updates from us on uh, housing, particularly multifamily housing. Um, based on the enrollment information that, that, that administration has gathered to date. Uh, we will most certainly exceed our enrollment projections out of River Street. Uh, we had projected thirty to thirty-five kids um, K through five uh, from River Street. Um, we're on, we're on, on the path or on target to exceed that number. Um, fortunately, um, that's offset a little bit by where enrollment seems to be going for middle school and high school. But but we do have kids six through twelve that are um, that are moving in there as well. So, you know, in the aggregate, the numbers look like they're going to be pretty close. Um, but of course, those elementary kids are with us for, let's say, a greater length of the pipeline. Than those older kids. And as we are fond of saying, all kids are welcome, and we knew that you were coming. So we're just watching those numbers very carefully, and I know Dr. Hackett and his team have been looking very carefully at, you know, where these kids actually live. Their ages, and how do we kind of manage space constraints, given we're building a new Lynch right now? And we uh, we, we don't have the luxury, a lot, a lot of extra space at Parkhurst. Um, so I know they're, they're working really hard on that. Um, the uh, project over on Cambridge Street is also much further along in terms of units that are spoken for. Then at least maybe I had expected at this point, um, so we do have enrollment coming in there as well. Um, but just to remind the community, you know, when Lynch opens in the fall of twenty five, we're going to be picking up classrooms at VO. That are right now used to accommodate our preschool program, because the preschool will be moving back to Lynch. So doesn't seem to be in the short term, we have any kind of a space problem at VO, but it certainly looks like. We'll have a new cohort of kids coming in to fill up some of that space. So, you know, whether it's, whether it's this or other housing projects, you know, Waterfield and and others. Um, we'll be sharing all this information with the UMass Donahue Institute um, for their number crunching. That's it.
Muted, Ms. Boney.
Thank you. Uh, thank you. Yes. My family has left, so now it's gotten quiet here again. So, um, thank you very much, Mr. Nixon. Uh, we appreciate the um, summary and I've just, or end your memo on the projects as we head into town meeting. That would be very important. Um, and then also just your remarks on the partnership. Um, with the community, and I would just say that with the ju, the high school gymnasium, that really is um, a focal point. For, um, it's so important for our staff and our students and for, as a part of our community, it's a real asset. Um, and then with respect to the facilities master planning phases and steps. Um, that will also be just so important towards our own planning um, with regard to the community, with our community buildings. So, Ms. Bergstrom?
I just had a couple of quick questions for Mr. Nixon, if that's okay. I'll work backwards. Um, facilities master plan, Mr. Nixon, is UMass Donahue, is, are they having meetings with the EFPBC? Or are they just, okay, they're just requesting data and we're funneling them the data that they need and collecting their own data.
Let me clarify, I mean, at some point, they may want to have a meeting to come kind of report what they're finding, but there, there are no meetings happening. There's no meeting scheduled right now. We're, we're simply kind of, they're developing a list of the information they're looking for, so we're just gathering information for them.
Okay, well, um, my request to be, could you just let the committee know if they are going to be meeting with the EFPBC? As many of us may want to listen into that.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you. And um, I thought I heard you say, but I'm going to clarify, are the enrollment in Morocco. Will they be getting to that sooner, so we have that information sooner, or is that still on the same timeline as everything else?
So I don't know that they would focus on Morocco, let, let me think about how to answer that. They're going to focus on, they will, they will give us sort of projections on enrollment district-wide, right, K through twelve.
Right.
Um, we will be sharing with them, for instance, the GIS information that tells them where our elementary districts are. Um, but as we've talked about from time to time, the school committee, you know, on the recommendation of the superintendent. From time, li, literally every ten to twelve years, we actually read district, right? So, so how many, how many kids in New Morocco should accommodate? Will be informed not only by what the enrollment projection looks like. But also by our understanding of what we call design capacity at the other four elementary schools, right? So, so what they do will be a key part of that, but it won't be the only part of that. I mean, so for instance, if the Lincoln Elementary School accommodated five hundred kids instead of four hundred and twenty, which it doesn't. But if it did, you know, that would obviously have an impact on how many kids might go to Morocco. Um, and then, and then at, at Lynch, because that's a new school, we know what that design capacity is. But as, as I know you and some other members are aware, our history in Winchester has been, if you build it, they will come. Um, I believe the MAPC had a study, um, and it was not of a great number of districts. And I don't mean to go on too long in answering your question, but they did a study not too long ago of a handful of districts. And they suggest that when you build a new elementary school, you can expect to see a three or four percent increase in enrollment in the next year or two. Winchester's experience has been triple that. So, w, w, these are, these are several of the things that UMass Donahue will certainly want to be looking at carefully and talking to us about. Um, they are aware of what our enrollment experience was, Ms. Bergstrom, both at Ambrose and at VO. And they know that it is a bit of an outlier compared to some other districts. But our experience is certainly going to be something that may inform what their suggestions or projections are for a new Morocco.
But we won't have any of that building information or anything that's in the master plan currently, where we go building by building on Morocco before the December date. That would be closer to the completion of, would that be the second half of December?
We would, we would expect, we would expect to have that certainly in a deliverable, deliverable by mid-December. If, if that information is available in like end of November, early December, it'll certainly be made available. And you know, the architects may be interested in that as well, uh, but certainly it should be available in December.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Um, my second question is the contingency on the high school gymnasium at fifteen percent. If we don't need that contingency, will the town just not have to borrow up to the total amount? Or will they borrow that? And then what happens to that contingency, since it's quite large if we don't use it?
So, so because we're talking about free cash, it's actually not a bonding or borrowing.
Okay.
We're talking about certified free cash. I think we heard from Stacy, right? I think we're around twenty-four million dollars or something. Yeah, so it would, it would be a free cash allocation.
Okay, great. So it's just free cash we wouldn't use then?
Hundred percent correct, yes.
Excellent, that's good.
And, and can I just add that this is, th, this is partly also why any private donations are so welcome. Because free cash that we don't need for this project is free cash that's available for, you know, other critical needs in town. Um, and I, and I, I think I'll need to be really clear about this with the town meeting next month. That, you know, we, I know this entire committee and the superintendent, you know, appreciates. Town meeting has already opened their wallets to the tune of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in free cash. I mean, there's been significant contributions already made towards this project. So when private groups, you know, sort of come forward and express an interest in helping, um, even if it's, you know, it's just a percentage, it's, it's meaningful.
Right.
It, it's meaningful literally in terms of the math, but um, I think it sends a really positive and constructive message to, to the community and the, and the town meeting as well.
And it's nice to all own it together.
Yeah.
Um, and then lastly, this is my last quick question, was the McCall and Ambrose Roof Replacement. Um, when the Select Board put question two to town meeting, the four hundred thousand dollar override for Lynch Traffic. It was also supposed to help fund school roof projects. Is that the uh, building stabilization fund? Does that reflect that?
So it does not. Um, so there were a couple of members of the board who brought up roof replacements as a hypothetical. When the board was discussing whether they were going to.
And presented to town meeting that way.
Two, right, but just to be clear, but, but that was not in the actual sort of ballot question, but you're right, they talked about that. Um, but what they did is they, they talked about it in the context of, because question number two, in effect, is a permanent uh, source of funding, right? Unlike, it's not a debt exclusion override. Unlike, it's not a debt exclusion override.
Right.
So my recollection, which may not be completely right, but I think I remember pretty clearly what the board said was is the reason, let's say a justification for question two becoming a permanent source of funding was not only to pay for the Lynch neighborhood traffic improvements, but to recognize that by the time that work is paid for, there will be other important facility needs on the school side. For instance, it was suggested roofs. And the member who made that point made a good one. Because across all of our buildings, we definitely will, you know, with some regularity, need to do roof work. It could just as easily be window replacements as far as I'm concerned. But, but no, the, the, the funding as it's presented is coming out of the stabilization fund for those two roof projects. And, and there's no direct connection to question two. In fact, as I understand, and maybe Mr. Hopcroft has a better understanding than I do, but my understanding is that when the bids came in on the Lynch neighborhood traffic safety improvements, the bids actually came in over budget. So they were actually going to have to go in and take some of those. You know, it's a number of intersections and sidewalk improvements. My understanding is management was actually going to take some of that out and then rebid the job. And then they would just have to come back later with that other work in a subsequent bid. So there's quite a bit of traffic, there's quite a bit of street sidewalk work to be done, to be funded by question two before there is some, let's say, surplus of funding that's available to go towards roofs. I think that that is some years down the road.
Right. I just, I just want to be clear with town meeting, since that suggestion was made several times at the Select Board table. Well, not even suggestion, but that indication that that's what that money would be used for. And then in their presentation at town meeting, I'm worried that they're, that they may ask again about that money when we're looking to borrow more money for this project now. So I just want to be clear that Capital is having those conversations with the Select Board and everybody's on the same page before we go into town meeting.
I think that's a point well taken. And to give Mr. McPeak credit, because he was chair at the time when question two was being developed. The board, the board asked Mr. McPeak, you know, on behalf of Capital, if, you know, if, if this would sort of, if this would work, could there be an agreement about how these funds would be used? And just as from time to time, members of this committee have said, no Winchester school committee can bind the hands of a future Winchester school committee. And Mr. McPeak said the same thing about Capital. Because the ballot question was worded the way it was, or the way it was to have been worded and was, there really is no way to guarantee that agreement. So it's simply kind of a working agreement that I think just requires conversation from time to time. Which is why I'm glad, I guess, you're raising the question when you are.
Yep. Thanks. That's all I had. I appreciate it. And I appreciate your thoroughness in the memo, too.
Thank you. Any other questions from other committee members? Otherwise, we will move on to, let's see, anticipated future agenda items. We will have an enrollment update, all of the facilities master plan. And, and we will continue to have the elementary literacy updates. We will be seeing, we'll be talking a lot more about the FY26 budget development and a review of the updated bullying response plan. More town meeting planning. A Lynch elementary replacement project update. And I'm looking forward to the process overview for the Morocco Statement of Interest for 2025. Future, are there any other anticipated future agenda items from other members?
Well, can I just throw out, you're interested among the committee in having a follow-up strategic planning session with the superintendent? I mean, I'm not saying we have to, but for what it's worth, I'd be interested in that.
Yes.
And can I just make a request when we talk about the Lynch replacement project? Can we include Dr. Hackett and Mr. Maron some of the updated playground planning? So people can start to get a sneak peek of that as well as the building itself?
Yes, we can, I believe. Okay. Then we have future meeting dates. October, next one will be October 24th. And then we will have the November 7th meeting, which is the beginning of town meeting. So that will be a free town meeting, meeting. And let me just see. As far as other meetings that are coming up, there is a field management committee, this is just FYI for committee members. There's a field management committee plan, or sorry, meeting coming up on the, I believe it's the 17th. However, I may have misspoken. It might be the 16th. But nevertheless, there is one coming up. And also we will begin having our finance subcommittee meetings at the end of the month, I believe it is. Ms. Bergstrom, you might have the date at the top of your head.
That's correct. I believe it is Wednesday. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Maron, Wednesday, October 30th? Is that the first one?
That is correct.
Yep, in the morning.
Be hyped up on candy and starting early.
Sorry, it's Thursday, October 31st.
Oh, Thursday, October 31st, okay.
Trick or treat. Okay, and if there are any other meetings that members are aware of, otherwise, we will move on to our executive session, the purpose of which are number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining as the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the committee. And purpose number six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property as the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the committee.
Motion to adjourn to executive for the purposes stated, and we will not be returning to public session for the purposes of adjournment.
That is correct.
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Dr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Aye.
And Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and thank you very much. We will be, we will see you in executive session.
You'll be receiving a link directly from me.
That's great. Thank you.